I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have determination of a quorum, please?
Mrs. Rogers.
President.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Thurston.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Haynes.
Here.
Mrs. Sutton.
Here.
Dr. Forghey.
Here.
Mr. Bertner.
President.
Mr. Hellman.
Here.
President Wilcox. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, did you want to say something about the meeting?
I sure can. Unfortunately, tonight, I believe our president and vice president are stepping out. So Gretchen, who's capable and has run many meetings, has offered to step up and run the meeting for us tonight. And so, thank you Gretchen for doing that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Moving on on our agenda, there are no minutes to approve. We're going to go now to the new public hearings and items number one and 1A we will hear together. Application, item number one is application number 0132-2025, a change of zoning from county zoning district A-2S, agricultural subdivision, to R3 moderate to high-density single-family residential for approximately 99 acres. Item number 1A is application number 0133-2025. That is a change of zoning from R3 moderate to high-density single-family residential to R3 PD residential plan development for approximately 99 acres, establishing 210 single-family lots for an age-restricted community to be known as Encore at Linden Walk and located in the 15,000 to 15,400 block of East 156th Street, South Side. This is submitted by Jack Boyd, Catherine James, Christopher Carr Boyd, Act II Investment Group LLC owners, Weekly Homes LLC applicant slash developer, Representative Ed Freeman, and Nelson &amp; Frankenberger, Jim Schinover, attorney, and John Doublechewitz, land use professor, professional. Ms. Stephens, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening. The change of zoning and PD ordinance and preliminary development plan applications under consideration affect five parcels of approximately 99 acres at the southeast corner, highlighted in blue on the screen, of the intersection of Prairie Baptist Road and 156th Street. One of the parcels is improved with what appears to be agricultural-related accessory structure. To the east of the sites are Meats and Bounds parcels located in Wayne Township, developed with single-family residential. To the north and west of the site is undeveloped property zoned R5 PD within the adopted Gatewood Lakes Plan Development approved for town home and two-family dwellings. The site's southern boundary entirety of the southern boundary is adjacent to undeveloped property, also zoned R5 PD, and also within the Gatewood Lakes area. To the south, that is planned for single-family dwellings within that development. The applicant is requesting a change of zoning from the Hamilton County Agriculture Subdivision Zoning District of A2S to R3, which is the Noblesville's moderate to high-density single-family residential. It's important to note that the change of zoning would take effect only upon the annexation of the property into the Noblesville corporate boundaries. The comprehensive master plan contemplates these parcels as new development area on the infill and redevelopment map with the designation of innovation flex-mixed uses. While the proposed project does not meet the intent of the plan's recommendation, it is not likely that this area is conducive to innovation or the flex-mixed uses due to lack of proximity to I-69, no visibility from the major arterials for such uses, and the adoption of the Innovation Mile Master Plan, where innovation and flex-mixed uses would be more appropriate, as well as the Gatewood Lakes Plan Development. The companion application to the change of zoning is the adoption of the preliminary development plan and ordinance for a 210 lot development to be known as Encore at Linden Walk. The development of single-family detached residential dwellings, age-restricted to 55-plus, would be accessed from both 156th Street and Prairie Baptist Road with no proposed access through Gatewood Lakes Development to the west or to the south. Private development amenities would include a community clubhouse, swimming pool, sports courts, and approximately one mile of internal trails. The applicant has also requested a number of waivers to the bulk standards landscaping and site development requirements of the UDO, as highlighted on pages four and five of the staff report. Staff is generally in support of the development standards waiver requests as the bulk standard waivers for minimum lot area width and setbacks would be appropriate for this particular site design and dwelling type. It should be noted that the lot coverage waiver is also supportable, but it must meet the impervious area modeled in the drainage report, which will be reviewed by engineering through the TAC process. In regard to the request for no perimeter buffer yard along the entirety of the southern boundary with the Gatewood Lakes Plan Development, the plant commission just needs to evaluate the appropriateness of this request. Gatewood Lakes is installing the required 50-foot landscape buffer as required by Article 12, and that buffer, again, will be along the entirety of the shared property boundary on that south. The applicant indicated in the justification of waiver submittal that where the continuation of residential subdivisions are planned, it is our understanding through prior discussions with the city that two buffers adjacent to one another are not intended by the UDO. While I appreciate what they're saying, what I understand from conversations with Joyce Ann is that while the intent of the UDO is to provide a landscape buffer between subdivisions, after seeing the installation of 100-foot buffer in between some subdivisions, there is room for flexibility and compromise on the depth of buffers between adjacent developments. Additionally, the applicant proposes to deviate from the ARB lot landscaping guidelines. Staff Report pages five and six summarize the ARB guidelines for the two lot sizes proposed by the PD ordinance, as well as the applicant's proposed landscaping. You'll see that a condition of project approval in Staff's page 10 is that all lot landscaping shall include the 24-inch shrubs per ARB guidelines. The applicant proposes a smaller number of shrubs per lot, as well as a smaller shrub than what is indicated in the guidelines. Finally, waivers to the minimum distance between driveway and street center line and a reduction in center line radii have been requested. While these waivers would be acceptable to the engineering department, all TAC comments must be addressed prior to issuance of an improvement location permit. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or hit on specific points.
Thank you very much. Commission members, do you have any questions for Staff?
All right, thank you.
Ms. Stephens, I'll invite the petitioner to approach and speak about the items.
Good evening. For the record, Jim Schinover, an attorney with the law firm of Nelson &amp; Frankenberger with offices in Carmel. With me tonight on behalf of the applicant, David Weekly Holmes, is Ed Freeman. Also here with us tonight are the project engineers Kevin Sumner and Garrett Eila of Y Engineers. As Amy has explained, this is a rezone and a preliminary development plan request for an age-restricted, for-sale, single-family detached residential community, if you know Encore at Linden Walk. Before I go through some additional comments in addition to what Amy provided you, I wanted to give you a brief idea of really what the Encore series of communities is all about for David Weekly Holmes. This would be the first such community to the Indianapolis market, is an age-restricted, HOPA-regulated community. These communities highlight recreational and social amenities. So what you'll see both in the PUD and as I'll briefly describe, there's a high amenity package with this proposal, including clubhouse, pool area, fitness areas, sports courts, tennis for pickleball, potentially bocce ball courts, multiple walking paths for residents, et cetera. These homes, because they're geared toward 55 and older, are master-down living type of features with universal home design offerings that are very attractive to this type of demographic. And they'll be maintained and regulated by an HOA association that would also provide maintenance of landscaping grounds and the amenities. As Amy described, just the site plan again, 99 acres. It's essentially surrounded by the Gatewood community or the Gatewood proposal that was approved earlier this year by the council and also then annexed into the city. One item to note is if this request would be successful, we would file an annexation petition to annex the real estate into the city. So again, if we're successful at this stage, that would be the next filing that we would proceed with to annex the property into the city of Noblesville. Next exhibit is the site plan Amy also provided to you, included in your informational brochures under tab three. As she indicated, there's two proposed entrances, one off 156th Street, one off Prairie Baptist. This development contains 210 lots along a curvilinear street design, which we believe will provide some aesthetic interest as you drive through the community, as well as that tends to slow down traffic speeds in a community when you have more of a street design like that. Also, what's unique about this community, in our opinion, is that there's two different lot size designs and lot size standards. And so that's going to also provide different variations in how these homes will appear within the community, and they're interspersed throughout the community. So there's not a section of this size lots and a section of that size lots. So they're very much interspersed throughout the community. We have walking paths that are provided throughout the community, and you'll see in a dark black line going along eastern perimeter throughout the site. Of course, we'll have the perimeter pathways along the perimeter roadways. Next exhibit is really just a summary of the home design. This was included behind tab five of your brochures. Again, all ranch homes, some of the home options have the option for a bump-up or a loft area above the first floor. The square footage is arranged from 1,500 square feet to 3,000 square feet. Masonry will be included on all four sides of the home, so we'll have a masonry wainscote on the side and rear elevations as well. There are 25 distinct home elevations that are offered in this community. We did appear before the ARB on October 15th, and they did review the plans. They requested some slight modifications to the ARB matrix that we have made and that are included in your informational brochures. So those items have been addressed. And then David Weekly Holmes anticipates price ranges to range between the mid-400,000s up to the mid-500,000 dollars. And again, 25 different home elevations included within your informational brochures, but I'm not going to go through every single example for you. Amenities included behind tab four of your brochures were various exhibits that detailed the amenities for the community, examples of how the common areas will be treated. And then also behind tab eight are some examples of the possible entryway signage. So to go through those briefly, and these are all exhibits that are included in the brochures and the PUD, but there's going to be a central amenity area, the main clubhouse, pool area, gathering space for the residents for activities, different areas for sports courts as well, which will probably include pickleball considering it's so very popular. And a very well-done amenity space and clubhouse for these residents because really that's what this demographic is coming to expect, living in a community like this. This is an example of architecture of another clubhouse they've done in another community in a different state. And this would be the general design idea for the community, for the clubhouse for this particular community. So we want to provide an example of what they've been able to do in other areas that they plan to, you know, mimic in a way. There might be some variations, but this is the design element they're looking for. Also included examples, exhibits detailing how pathways may look, how common area treatment may occur with fire pits, outdoor spaces for gathering around the community. When you go back and you look at the site plan, there's little different parks of common areas throughout the community. These were the exhibits that were included behind tab eight of the brochure, include examples of entryway treatment they've done in other communities. We would go back, once we finalize an entryway treatment for this community, we would review it with Staff. But if you have preferences on some of these looks, when I'm done speaking and we're doing the Q and A, you can give us some ideas. But we wanted to provide some examples of what they've done in other communities. Also, we included, behind tab nine of your brochures, some rental commitments. You've seen these in many of the residential rezones over the last two to three years. The version that I included in your plant commission brochures were slightly revised after we received some feedback from council. And what we submitted, what I submitted to Staff yesterday, was the revised commitment that they have. And it's the same as the commitment you have, other than what I've highlighted in yellow. We now have a specific percentage cap on the amount of homes that would be eligible for a rental situation in this community. But a home cannot be rented at all until the occupant has lived in there for a year. So that's the first trigger. You got to live in there a year, and then once you live in there a year, you can rent it to a third party. And those leases to a third party would have to be for a full year. But then there's a cap of 15%. So we wanted to make that change. I provided to Staff yesterday, and should you have any questions regarding that, we can address those. In conclusion, our team has worked closely with the planning staff, with Sarah's office regarding this proposal. We appreciate the time and input they provided to us. We held our neighborhood meeting on Thursday, October 9th. We had no one in attendance, but we were there, so that was good. Also, as noted in the staff report, they are recommending positive consideration. We respectfully ask that you make that recommendation to the council. But we also did review the staff report and the three conditions of approval listed by Staff, which David Weekly is agreeable to. They will be sure, in those conditions, we're addressing all TAC comments, which will be done, annexing the property into the city of Noblesville, which will be done next, and that the lot landscaping shall include 24-inch shrubs per the ARB guidelines. With that said, we do appreciate your time tonight. I will remain available to answer any questions that you may have with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schinover. I just have a quick question. So that change in your commitment about revised rental commitment, that's not included in the current staff report that we're all looking at, is that correct?
Yeah, the version of the commitments that you would have in your staff report
Is different.
predate yesterday, and it's slightly different. But that highlighted sentence is what has been added.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to point that out in case there's a favorable motion, including stipulations and conditions that'll need to be added, should you feel in agreement with that. Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner and the team?
I'd like to say during the development process, whatever, I compliment the developer and the engineer. We're very good, very responsive, and very much appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. Good to hear. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Thurston.
So, thank you. Just a couple of comments first. Love the green space, love the fact that there's some openness throughout the entire development area. Something that I've really been pushing for, not just having one central location, but when we have these larger developments like this, giving folks an opportunity to kind of have a community within the section of the community a little bit. So thank you for doing that. That with the trails and the common areas really make this, you know, a nice development. Thank you for adding the rental restrictions. I know this was brought up at council with the color palettes, the anti-monotony thing. I thought I saw it addressed in here, but I just want to make sure that is addressed.
Yes, sir. What you have, and this is included in your resubmittal plant commission brochures, but on that exhibit C with the architectural standards, which results from the ARB, what we added is the last item, Note 10, is the color of the primary siding trim and masonry shall be applicable to the ARB anti-monotony provisions, where two or three shall be different colors. So we address that.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then you agreed, or they're agreeing to the height of the shrubs. There were a couple that also went just height that the numbers were off. Like seven, six instead of eight, or zero instead of one tree. Are we going to?
We were hopeful to retain that, and part of the reason was that these are smaller lots, and so there's slightly less area for some of these plantings. We want to make sure they're healthy.
Okay.
And so that remains part of the request, as far as some of the changes in the plantings, but the shrub height of 24 inches.
I mean, it wasn't a huge number that was off, so I just, Staff okay with that? Yes? And then, I don't know if this is something for you or for Ms. Stephens, but the landscape buffer thinking, I want to make sure I understand. What, are we okay with how it's presented? Or are there still some concerns?
The only concern is what is the plant commission comfortable with? Gatewood Lakes is providing that 50-foot landscape buffer on, within their own development around this entire area here, where the applicant's project abuts.
So if we had them do another one, there'd be two side by side?
There would be two side by side. So that's the question, is the plant commission okay with Gatewood Lakes 50-foot buffer and nothing on Encore of Linden Walk? Now, they are providing the required buffer along Prairie Baptist 156 and on the east side as well. So that's the question. Do you want 100-foot buffer? Do you want, is 50 feet agreeable and acceptable?
What have we, have we had a similar?
Usually what we see is that applicants, when they are abutting another development, ask for a 25-foot buffer, because that development also has a 25-foot buffer. So in some, we end up with a 50-foot buffer, but it's split between the two subdivisions. That's what we've seen in the last couple of years.
So in this instance, we're still going to have 50s, just one guy's.
Correct, correct. It's the buffers entirely within the Gatewood Lakes division.
Thank you for that clarification.
Of course.
That's all I got.
In one item, a quick further clarification, the engineer reminded me that the perimeter buffer provided to the south on the Gateway, Gatewood project, in addition to the 50-foot buffer, it will include some areas that have mounting as well and landscaping. And then we will be putting a rear yard tree in the rear lot. So there's going to be landscaping and buffering.
Commissioner, are there, oh, go ahead. I was just going to ask if there were more questions for the petitioner. Thank you, Mr. Schinover.
Thank you.
These items are before the plant commission as items requiring public hearings. If you'd like to speak about the items, please approach the podium, state your name, address, and position, and make sure you have filled out or fill out a blue card for me at some point. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask if there is further discussion or a motion. And there are two different motions required. First one should be for a change of zoning.
I move to approve the change of zoning request from A2S to R3 submitted per the presentation for application number LEGP-000132-2025 and forward. Favorable recommendation for adoption to the common council with the following condition: zoning change shall not take effect until property is annexed into Noblesville corporate boundaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded forward with a favorable recommendation. Could we have roll call vote on this, please?
Mrs. Rogers.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Dr. Forghey.
Aye.
Mrs. Sutton.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Bertner.
Aye.
Ms. Haynes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for the preliminary development plan and ordinance?
I move to approve the change of zoning requests from R3 to R3 PD residential plan development as per the presentation and submittals for application number LEGP-000133-2025, including the adoption of the preliminary development plan and ordinance with the following waivers and stipulations, and the additional stipulation for rental restrictions. Approval shall be subject to the following conditions and the following three that are listed in the staff report.
So just for the clarification of the motion, the stipulations are items one through 10 on page 10 of your staff report. And then as Ms. Rogers mentioned, there's also three conditions.
conditions. And then on top of that, she's also accepting the modified commitment, which included the rental restriction.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Who got the, who was the second?
Maybe it is.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to forward this item with a favorable recommendation. Could we have roll call vote on it, please?
Mrs. Rogers.
Aye.
Mr. Bertner.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Haynes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your time tonight, and also thanks again to staff and engineering, they were very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry. I was always wanting to say that.
You found the right person to say it to, didn't you? Thank you very much. Item number two, miscellaneous, application LEGP-0152-2025, Plan Commission Order Number 02-2025, determining that the resolution and economic development plan approved and adopted by the City of Noblesville Redevelopment Commission conforms to the comprehensive master plan for the City of Noblesville, and approving said resolution and economic development plan for the creation of two separate allocation areas from the original Hyde Park allocation area, known as Avanza at Hyde Park Project allocation area, and the Village at Hyde Park Project allocation area. Ms. Yelton, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to make this real simple. So basically, back in December of 2022, we adopted, again, the Noblesville Hyde Park Economic Development Area, and what we're actually doing is splitting this out into two more specific areas. The area here that's outlined in the red would be known as the Village at Hyde Park, and the area here along that is in the purple is the Avanza area. Basically, obviously, we've got two plans that we've already approved here. When it originally went through, both of these projects have been before the Plan Commission and the council, have both been adopted. For simplistic purposes, this is basically splitting out these two areas from the original Hyde Park. If you have any questions, there is an attorney here that could speak if you have any specific questions. He is in the audience. In fact, he's the only one left in the audience.
Our commission members, are there any questions about this item?
Nope.
And it doesn't require a public hearing, does it, Mr. Hughes?
It does not.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item? Or not approve it, if you feel inclined.
I'm making motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we're going to do just a show of hands if that's acceptable. All in favor of approving, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstained? I'd say we're all in favor. Thank you very much. Item number three, adoption of the 2026 meeting dates and filing deadlines for the Plan Commission. Ms. Yelton, please.
So again, this is a calendar that we put together for basically the development community, so that when somebody hits a filing deadline, they can kind of tell where they're going to fall in line and what meetings they're going to have to attend. And basically, this deals mostly with the Plan Commission. The only thing that I will note real quickly is the typical third Monday meetings, there are four of them that are not on the third Monday. It's always the January and February meetings. Those fall on the third Tuesday because both of those are holiday Mondays. We have moved our October meeting back to the fourth Monday, and then the Plan Commission in December is moved up to the second Monday. So those are the only changes out of our meeting dates. Everything else is basically filing deadline when the council meets, you know, when we have to do TAC reviews, ARB, all of that's on this one.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff about this? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. If you're in agreement with approving this calendar, please raise your right hand or any hand. Looks like everyone's in favor, so I won't even call for anything else. So it looks like we've approved the calendar. Is there any further business this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Or adjourned, thank you.